A late to call to order the Acushnet School Committee meeting remotely on Tuesday, April 14, 2020 at 5:30. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically assess the school committee meeting however we are YouTube live. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at httpps. If you need to access us live, feel free, you can email Kelly. Does that work? She can email. If you have trouble finding, the link is on the school committee agenda. If you have trouble finding the link, please feel free to email Kelly Benavides. And I'm going to be saying her email address in a minute. It is K E L L Y B E N E V I D E S at acushnetschools.us. So if you have trouble getting onto the link, please email Kelly and she can help you find us. In addition, the events will be rebroadcasted on the local cable access channel. The school community reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practical. Okay. So with further notice, call to order the April 14 meeting. Can I have a motion to, and please silence all cell phones for everyone that's at the meeting? And can I have a motion to start the meeting?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. And we will do a roll call just to keep things. Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. DeTerra?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's everyone. Okay. So we are not going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We don't, not to be any disrespect, we don't have a flag. And so we're just, we'll pass over that for this time. All right, approval of minutes, payroll and warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the public hearing FY21 budget minutes of March 10, 2020?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the school committee minutes of March 10, 2020?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And lastly, can I have a motion to approve all payroll and warrants?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So regarding delegation, comments are welcome during the public comment segment. Please forward all comments to the recording secretary, Kelly Benavides, at K E L L Y B E N E V I D E S at acushnetschools.us. Kelly will be monitoring the inbox for about five minutes or so, and she'll let us know if there's anyone that has any public comment for tonight. Please state your name and your comment in the email.
So, Ms. Tavares, I did get an email already earlier today. I don't know if you can save that till afterwards, or if you want to get started with that.
Um, we can get, do you want to get started? Were you going to send it to me through email?
Do you want me to read it, or do you want me to email?
Sure, if you'd like to email it, go right ahead.
Do you want me to email it?
Email. No, I'm sorry, if you want to read it, go right ahead. It's just easier that way.
Sure, no problem. So I received this email. This is from Lisa Carvalho, the ATA president. So on behalf of the entire Acushnet Teachers Association, as president, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Bailey and all the essential personnel who have worked so diligently over the past several weeks. Through these difficult and unprecedented times, Dr. Bailey has recreated the team we once were. She has been nothing short of the leader our district has needed. On March 13, Dr. Bailey called our staff together to discuss what decisions had been made on how to keep our entire schools, school families safe and healthy. She was kind, empathetic, sensitive when answering questions and getting out factual information. She assured us all that we would keep the lines of communication open, and she has gone above and beyond in doing so. Dr. Bailey has set the tone. She has taken the lead. Acushnet is ahead of the game. Her foresight in having us plan and prepare to keep the learning going for our students has eased everyone's, parents and staff's fears and stress level. We have collaborated, come up with ideas, discussed and pivoted to do what works best for our district and families. Dr. Bailey and I have talked, texted or emailed several times a day since the 13th. Her communication with staff, as well as our parents, has been head over heels above every other district in our area. She has made careful thought, she has made carefully thought out decisions about what is best for all of us, and it has not gone unnoticed amongst our staff and parents. Dr. Bailey has been working countless hours throughout these last, past few weeks to make sure we are all safe. Though the last few weeks have been filled with uncertainty and fear, Dr. Bailey has taken the time to assure us all that we will get through this together in the most respectful, sensitive and caring way. She has given myself and our association faith in the trust that has, that has been lacking. She is a true leader. Staff have gone above and beyond because she has led the way and respected all we have done and continue to do. A leader leads by example, and she has done so thorough, so thoroughly in this very difficult and uncertain time. I've always been, I've always been proud to be part of the Acushnet Public School family. It may have been discouraged a few times, but these past several weeks, I am especially proud to be part of this family. Dr. Bailey has demonstrated her skills as being a leader to be that of someone who I'm happy and look forward to working with in years to come. Acushnet is a better place with her at the helm. Sincerely, Lisa M. Carvalho, ATA president.
Oh, well, it's wonderful. Good job, Dr. Bailey.
Fantastic.
Very nice.
I agree.
Thank you.
If I could just say, it's because we have a great team. Everybody has pitched in, so I appreciate the words, but it's everybody, too.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, I've been extremely proud to be a part of this district, not just wearing my parent hat, but also being a part of this committee. So thank you for your leadership, Dr. Bailey, and thank you for all the team, for everything you're doing in this really difficult time.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Benavides, just keep me posted if you receive anything else, okay?
I will.
All right. So we're, we do not have any old business, so jumping into new business, superintendent to report, Dr. Bailey, Personnel Matters.
Okay, so the first thing I have is the personnel report. Since our last meeting, we did hire Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, which would be effective July 1. Mrs. Carrie Stoffel will be joining our team. And this just happened officially about a week ago. So what I would like to do is introduce her at the next meeting with our Director of Facilities at the next meeting. We'll have to wait and see if we're still doing virtual meetings. We'll have to have them join us virtually, but I would like to invite them both. But I, you know, happy to say that Carrie Stoffel was interviewed by staff members, school committee, parents, administrators, and she was a finalist, moved forward in that respect, and just really knocked it out of the park, according to what the people on the committee told me. I did have a couple of interviews with her as well. She's super excited to be joining our team, and I think now more than ever, given our situation with COVID-19, we need someone to be taking the helm and the lead with the teaching and the learning because, you know, we have some concerns, given the fact that our kids are missing about a third of the year, if they do go through to the end of the year of remote learning. And we have a lot of work to do, but I think children are very resilient, and I think she's innovative, and I just, I'm looking forward to having her join our team and introduce her to you in the next month.
Excellent.
Great news.
So that's all I have for Personnel Matters.
Okay. And so April vacation, last day of school, and then this one will require us to take a vote.
Right. So the Commissioner of Education has left, many superintendents in the state have requested to utilize, can we use the four days, one day is a holiday next week, but the other four days to continue the remote learning? And if they would count towards our calendar year, and the Commissioner of Education essentially said it's a local decision. So the two sides of that is, we would keep the calendar the same, and if we keep it the same, we really don't need a vote, it just stays the same. Everybody would take a week off, including students and staff, which would be next week, and we keep it the same. The other option is using the four days, one day is a holiday, so we don't count that day, but the Tuesday through Friday next week, which is the 21st, the 24th, as remote learning days that would count towards our school days for our children, that would lead us to a last school day of June 15. If we kept the vacation, our last day would be June 19. I did send out a survey to staff. I got 123 responses about their April vacation preference. 65% of staff voted to continue remote learning and count the four vacation days towards the 180 total days, last day being June 15. 30.9% of staff said it didn't matter to them. So that's over 95%. And then very small percentage said, I need a break, don't count the four days of April vacation, towards the 180 total, the last day would be June 19. I think for those folks, I think people are staying hopeful that we will be able to physically connect with children by the end of the school year. But overwhelmingly, our staff is in favor of continuing the remote learning. People are feeling like they're in a routine right now with the children and the staff. We've had quite a bit of professional development for staff, and it's been a big change for everybody, quite frankly. So I would recommend that we go in line with not only what the staff has said, many of them are also families in the district, but the day last week when we had families showing up, we had over 200 families show up to receive Chromebooks and packets, I informally asked many families outside how they feel about, you know, keeping the vacation versus continuing the remote learning, and overwhelmingly, people thought they were in a very good groove, let's keep the remote learning going, that's what I heard. So my recommendation would be to support the staff in this situation where over 95% of staff is in favor to forego the April vacation. If that's something that the committee chooses to do, you would need to make a motion to alter the schedule, and that we would continue working through next week officially. Students would continue remote learning, staff would continue their communication.
Thank you. So can we have some discussion regarding, regarding this, and what do, what do we, what's our thoughts?
So I'm thinking if the majority of the staff thinks it's a good idea, and I know I've been speaking with parents, and they don't want to stop the momentum either, of course, a lot of us are not traveling or anything, so that's sort of a moot point. I mean, if you are camping or doing anything like that, I mean, you can bring your tablets with you and do any work that you have to do. I mean, I think it's a good idea to skip over the vacation and just get out early. That's just my opinion.
Does anybody else?
I think if everybody else is on board, teachers and administration, I think we should move forward.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for surveying the teachers and the staff, Dr. Bailey, and taking the effort to, or taking the initiative to get some feedback. It seems like there's overwhelming consensus to continue forward and keep moving. So I would, I would agree with your recommendation as well.
I also agree with you all. I think we should keep the ball rolling, and if the staff is on board with it, I think we should just full speed ahead and finish a little earlier and keep them going.
Great. Great. So can I have a motion to adjust the 2019-20 school calendar to continue virtual learning through April vacation?
Make a motion.
And that the last day would be June 15 as scheduled.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right.
Excellent, thank you.
So continuation, yep.
The next thing on my agenda is my report, continuation of payment of salaries of all Acushnet Public Schools employees during the COVID-19 school closure. One of the guidelines that Desi has recommended throughout this entire crisis has been to, for districts to really try to pay their employees, their hourly employees, their teachers, et cetera. And, you know, we did agree, people are being paid right now for the work that they are doing currently, but I did include a motion in your packet. I think it's really important, this is a budgetary issue, that the committee officially vote this to continue payment. What I would recommend is that we officially take that vote, and it's in the motion to go until May 4, because that is the date that Governor Baker has closed schools for, until, and then, then we look at it again, depending on what happens, maybe within the next week or two, we'll have another decision by the governor, and then at our next meeting, take another official vote. But it will be my recommendation to pay our staff, you know, through May 4 for this motion and through the rest of the school year. But I did give you the wording of the motion that we would need for officially until May 4, which is what Governor Baker has proposed at this point in time.
Okay. My apologies, I'm just going to try to find the vote language. Let's see. Right here, motion to pay employees. Okay. Okay. So before we go into a vote, does, do we have any discussion? I know this is just our regular, right, our regular, like cafeteria workers, our regular hourly employees, such as?
Okay. I mean, we have budgeted for it. I don't know if Kristin, Mrs. Flynn wants to pipe in on this, but we have budgeted for this, and I think it's the right thing to do. Nobody could have predicted the situation that we're in. We've already told employees that we are paying, this is more of an official vote right now to get us to May 4.
Okay. So prior to taking the vote, does anyone have any discussion they want to, they're okay? All right. So we can do the vote, and then if we have further discussion, we can do that, too. So motion to pay employees, move that during the period from March 20, 2020 through May 1, 2020. Karen?
Did she freeze up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does somebody else have the motion handy on, in their folder, just in the interest of time?
Well done. I have it here. Do you want me to read it?
It's up to you, Jen. If you want to wait for Jody, or at least we could read the motion and then have that discussion. I'm sure she's trying to get back on.
Yeah. I'm happy to read it, I have it right here. Motion to pay employees, move that during the period from March 20, 2020 through May 1, 2020, here and after, referred to as the quote "closure period," the Acushnet School Committee, subject to appropriation, shall pay the regular wages for workdays during the closure period to each employee of the Acushnet Public Schools, excluding day substitutes, provided that each, that each such employee to be paid performs work that may be requested or required by the employee supervisor during each of the workdays to be paid in the closure period. Nothing in this motion limits any rights that any employee may have to take vacation, sick or personal leave during the closure period. In the event that schools are closed beyond May 1, 2020, the Acushnet School Committee will revisit this issue and make a separate determination as to whether or not to continue paying employees.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing.
She's back.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Tavares, should I continue on with my report?
Yep.
Next item is custodians contract. I'm not going to get into the particulars, but the ATA did ratify the contract last week, and I know that one of the reasons why we're going into executive session is to review the details and then return into regular session to take a vote on that contract. And then the next item, the last item I have, is to do an update on this whole chaotic situation with COVID-19 and the remote learning within Acushnet Public Schools. I am going to attempt right now to share my screen. Hold on one second. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So back in February, we really started hearing lots of things about COVID-19 in the country, and we were in constant communication. We were watching all of the alerts with the CDC, with DPH officials, I was in touch with our local Board of Health, the Commissioner of Education, to just really stay up on all of this information so that we could keep our entire school community safe. So what we did while we were still in school is we established protocols at school, we had an educational component at the middle school, we had our health teacher addressing COVID-19 through all of our classes, talking about the importance of hand washing and properly sneezing and coughing into the elbow, and just a lot about the disease prevention. And we had something similar happening in our elementary school, especially with the hand washing and the sneezing and the coughing into the elbows. Everybody was really reinforcing the importance of that. We also made sure that we purchased additional supplies. We made sure that the custodians had all of their supplies in good working order. And we really, Mrs. Flynn worked really hard with the custodians to make sure that our disinfecting protocols were strengthened. You know, they were going above and beyond to be sure that every single day, the touch points were being sprayed down, students' desks, tables, et cetera, all the main areas of our school buildings. We eliminated self-service bars in our cafeterias. We had a conversation with our bus companies to disinfect the buses daily. We canceled, we ended up canceling all out-of-state field trips, and we also required staff and families to disclose vacation plans. And again, this was while we were still in school. And then, as you know, Governor Baker did announce school closure, but prior to him announcing school closure, I had already been meeting with my Old Colony Superintendent's Association, which is a group of regional superintendents, and we felt it was so important that we stand together on this because we thought with the protocols of social distancing to make a real difference, we should go at this together. So we actually decided to cancel school prior to the governor's announcement, a few days before that time. And, you know, all of our communication has been, you know, multiple ways, website, social media, emails, texts, and then the robo calls, those one calls that the families get. We've been trying to keep everyone just up to date and really informed with what is going on. This is new for everybody, and I thought it was really important. The communication piece was super important, not only internally, but with our families as well, and our school community. Throughout the entire thing, our top priority has always been and continues to be the safety, health and wellbeing of our students, our staff and our entire school community. So I've made it very clear to staff that this is not an educational crisis, this is actually a global health crisis, and the education is actually impacted because of the health crisis. So the education stuff is secondary. We have to make sure that people are safe and healthy. So we've been really trying to make sure that people's basic needs are met. So what we did was, we sent out surveys to families and staff, we checked in with people, we wanted to know what they needed during this time. And everything happened so quickly with the closure, so we asked our staff, our families in the survey if they needed food, that grab and go program, if they needed food for us for breakfast or lunch during the school week, and we really didn't get the number of participants, it was quite, quite low. So we jumped on board with the programs in New Bedford, and in some cases Dartmouth, when New Bedford wasn't open, we've been invited in both districts to participate, and anyone can go 18 years and older, they go, they don't ask you where you're from, Acushnet, families and students can certainly, and we have had families participate in the grab and go. And there's several locations that are actually close by in the north end of New Bedford that participate in this program. So again, it's close by. We also wanted to make sure that our families had clinical services available. So I know that our clinical staff has been working with families, and anyone who expresses a need, we certainly wanted to be sure that counseling services continued, et cetera. We set up a Wildcat Wellness page, and you're going to hear more about that in a little bit. So I'll wait until we show you that, but basically, that's a page where clinical staff has really put together some great resources, including some boredom busters for at-home clinical, social, emotional learning. Our special education services, although they look different, are continuing. Everyone is doing their best to be sure that our students get serviced in the best way possible with all of the unique circumstances that people are in. So Ms. Bettencourt, our Director of Student Services, has been working really hard to be sure that all of our families and students with special education services, the communication has been tight, and the services are continuing. We've also have a link, you'll see more about this tonight also, for the COVID-19 resources, anybody who wants to know more information about this disease, we put resources on there, how to, you know, handle anxiety, fear, just information, general information about the disease itself. We've also, in our surveys, we've asked students and families, you know, who needs, who doesn't have access to electronics at home? And this was done kindergarten through grade eight. And to date, I believe we've passed out about 150 Chromebooks. We've had two different distribution days, but in total, we've passed out 150 Chromebooks as to, to support our families. You know, families are in situations where an adult may have to work from home and use the only computer, so perhaps a student needs a Chromebook from us, and we've been willing to do that. We purposely chose not to hand out the preschool children the Chromebooks. We think there's lots of things that children at that age can be doing besides being on a Chromebook, and we're going to get more into that remote learning in a bit. But the idea is, basic needs have to be met first before we can talk about educational needs. And the idea is that we are all in this together. So the guidelines from the state have really been to keep the learning alive, not really get into new learning because it is an equity issue. We have perhaps some families that may not have access to electronic, you know, or they can't make a Zoom conference meeting, but remote learning can look very different. It's not just online learning, it's, you know, it could be the electronic or the hard copies of those student packets that the teachers have put together. We put together lots of links to resources that really deepen their learning. We don't have 80 to 100% of students in the district who have mastered all of the standards that have been taught this year. So we have lots of ways that we can deepen the learning that has already taken place. And that has been the focus. Also, applicable activities at home. You can certainly have quality learning, whether children go outside to work on some project in nature, STEM activity, cooking from a recipe. Those are just as quality learning opportunities as some of those educational resources and links are. Reading a book, that's also remote learning. So the focus is, again, to have the students practice and hone their skills while they participate in remote learning. The Commissioner has said that he's recommending about a half of a school day. So we said it would be fair, at this point in time, for children to be working remotely two to three hours a day. That's about half, three hours. And again, we're very understand, we're understanding that each day is different. So if you can't get the three hours in one day, maybe you're on a roll the next day and you've got three and a half hours in. But you should plan between two and three hours roughly each day. And we're still working out some kinks with that right now. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. We decided that, again, as part of the state guidelines, it would be a pass-or-fail system. The idea is to keep children engaged in their learning. The grades are not the most important thing, especially at the elementary and middle school. We don't have to worry about, thankfully, GPAs like in high school. So, you know, for our district, it's more important to us that children are actually learning and engaged versus what a grade, what the grade is. We want children to stay engaged. So we sent out a notification and guidance regarding remote learning to families. And that essentially was sort of like a permission slip. If families choose to have their children engage in the Zoom conferences, we sent out notification, which is what we had to do. Right now, we've gotten a lot of feedback from families. And, you know, our current goal is to really streamline the communication. So for example, I think the issue comes around more at the middle school than the elementary school. At the middle school, students have many teachers. And I think teachers are all trying to do their very best to be sure that they're in touch with children, giving those assignments. But I think sometimes that can be a little overwhelming when they're getting multiple emails and assignments every day. So we're really working hard to streamline that communication. And one of the things that we will be showing you tonight is we placed a new icon on our website, the Home Learning, which started today. And I think that's going to help teachers. It's going to help families. It's going to be this one-stop shopping where you just go to this one spot for those assignments versus multiple places. But we will show you more of that today as Mr. Oliver is going to be giving you a quick little tour of the website. Expectations for educators. We asked them at the beginning, really focusing on people's basic needs. But we wanted to be sure that they were checking in with their students at least twice a week. Part of that survey that we gave out, they were asked, what students are you not hearing from? And we forwarded any of those names to our clinical staff. And our counselors are certainly reaching out to families for anyone that we have concerns about, to make sure that people are getting as engaged as they can with the remote learning. Again, that communication can include these Zoom conference meetings, emails, phone calls. But we're saying at least twice a week to reach out in some way. It's very important to us that we were collaborating by grade level to really deepen that student learning. Given this disease, we don't know that, you know, perhaps family members or our own colleagues could become sick. We want to make sure that the remote learning, there's not a hiccup in it and that we're all working together, that if somebody has to pause for a little bit to take care of a family member or they're not feeling well, we have that grade level working together to be sure that the remote learning for that grade level is seamless. And, you know, it's getting people to really collaborate together. So I do know that the principals are having meetings with the grade levels just to review this collaboration. So I think that's going very well. We've asked teachers to check their emails daily. We've had mandatory professional development sessions, as well as staff meetings on the Zoom conference calls. In addition to the remote learning, we thought it was really important to give children something to look forward to. And we have found quite a positive response with this. So one of the first weeks that we were out, we had a virtual spirit week where, you know, children maybe wore their favorite sports, memorabilia, sweatshirts, whatever. And people would send in pictures. So they did some chalk talk, rainbow hunts. Our teachers and staff sent really positive messages. And we sent a little video out to our families and students, which was very well received. And we had our students do the same thing by sending some positive messages back. And we created another video with these messages for the teachers and the staff. So people are really participating in these things because they're fun. And it's just something that they're continuously strengthening their collaboration and their friendships with each other by participating in some of these social media things. We have virtual field trips going on. So, you know, we're trying to teach children that you don't need to get out of your house. You can go anywhere in the world and learn about different things. So we've put out challenges to take two field trips during this week. So this is the second week that we're running this. Our academic coach has actually posted a video on our Facebook page to show children how to take a virtual field trip. And we have a ton of links available to children to pick a place. You know, we said perhaps you pick a place within the United States or you pick a place outside of the country. It could be a place, it could be a museum, really anything. So I think the children are really having a good time with this, as you can see from the pictures that have been posted on our social media. It's, I know it's been really hard to keep up on all of it, but I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Benavides, who has really been the one taking, you know, command of that Facebook with all of those pictures. So I just want to say that, you know, Governor Baker on March 25th announced that schools would be closed for in-person instruction until May 4. We had a superintendent's meeting today, and we were told it could be sometime this week, possibly, or early next week. We should be hearing more information. But as information becomes available, I will certainly let our families and entire school community know. And we will continue to send out communication. You know, and this is, this is a new way of doing business for all of us. And as I told the staff, this is something that we will continue to get better and better at. So does anybody have any questions so far?
No.
No?
No, okay. Is Mr. Oliver here?
I am here, yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask at this point, Mr. Oliver, if you could give the committee and the public a tour of the home, extended home learning links that we've put together for students and families, as well as the new portal, the portal that will help with streamlining communication. And then if you could just take another brief minute or two to show them our new YouTube channel, where our educators have been posting lessons. I would love to see that.
Absolutely, Dr. Bailey. I just asked if you could stop sharing your screen.
That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Okay, how about that?
So I'm going to start my video. And I'm going to go in and start sharing my screen with you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
You're welcome.
All right, well, here's our website, which should look very familiar to most of you. And one of the things you're going to notice right away is up at the top here, next to where the Aspen icon and our lunch menu icon. A new icon was created today called our Home Learning Portal. Now, this is a little bit different than our extended learning tab here, in which when you click on this Home Learning Portal, this is going to take you to a landing page. And my internet's a little slow here. So here's our landing page, and this was created by Dr. Bailey. And it's essentially a one-stop shop, as she alluded to, for parents to go to, to find, and students as well, to find everything around curriculum, anything that's curriculum-related, anything that is for the students that teachers have set up. So if we scroll down here, there's a little introduction. And parents can right away find our Ford Staff Director and our Elementary Staff Directory. And then here, it's very simple. You have your Ford, you have the Ford Middle School. And right underneath there is the Acushnet Elementary School. And what we'll do is we'll click here and go into the Ford Middle School. And when you click there, it takes us to the Ford Middle School landing page. So instead of having a mishmash of different subject areas here and there and everywhere, what we tried to do is put everything into one central location where parents and students can go into to find exactly what they need to continue their online learning. If you were to scroll down here, you will see that everything is separated by grade level in addition to your specialties and your student services, guidance class. If you continue scrolling down, see some more important links. These are all links in which you can, if you click on that, it'll take you to the Maddie in the Morning and the COVID closures with Colin R. Both of those students are doing such a fabulous job. In addition to Zoom meeting schedule, but let's stop, let's start here. I'm going to click on grade five. And this was all made possible, I would like to just, while I'm thinking of it, just send a shout out to Jean Downey and Monique Cote for providing some professional development on Monday, yesterday, to our staff. They did a great job putting this together on short notice. And then also to all the staff for pitching in and really stepping up to the plate to make this possible. In addition, I would just like to mention Kathleen Born, who works in the Technology Department. That's been a huge help with everything on our website. So going back here, here's our grade five remote learning, as it says, all our staff that are in grade five. And then, very simply, you can choose to click on English, Math, Science, Social Studies, whatever subject that you want to go to, whether you're a student or if you're a parent guardian, you can just drill down into the subject area. And then the teachers, Mrs. Smith, for example, here, will continue to update this on a regular basis. And here are the assignments for April 13 through the 17th, the Zoom sessions. And then you continue down. It's the math with those teachers and so on. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to come back up here. I'm going to close that out. And I'll just show you, if you were to click on, say, let's say, student services. And this is actually really important for our eighth-grade students. So here, this is everything related to student services. Our counselor Zoom meetings that are taking place for grades five and six, Tuesdays between 12 and 12:30, seventh and eighth grade, Tuesdays 12:30 to 1:00. We have our guidance class, high school information for our grade eight students, registration packets, our course selections for Fayetteville High School for those eighth graders that have been going there. New Bedford High School registration packet, our nurses. Just, this is really just a great opportunity where we consolidated all our information across both schools into this one icon at the top of the page and where you can really receive the curriculum links. And like I said, the one-stop shopping to everything that is pertinent to our students. And now, for those elementary school parents and students, they can just click here. And that'll take them over to the Acushnet Elementary School Home Learning Portal. And this information is set up the same exact way as the middle school. We have our grade levels, our specialties, interventionists. And all these links are active. So if they click on them, parents, students click on them, they'll take them right in there. So I'll just, let's go into grade three here, take a quick look. Just want to show everyone that it is as simple as it looks. You click, you find what grade level your student is in. You come into the grade level. Here's some information, some great information put together by the grade three team. When their Zoom meetings are. Because of privacy concerns, and I know this has come up a couple of times amongst staff and parents, I received some emails in which we do, there are those concerns around privacy with online learning, specifically video conferencing. So none of the Zoom links are any of the Google Hangout links that a couple of teachers may be using. None of those are made public. So those will be sent out privately for the obvious reasons. So I'm going to close out here. Does anyone have any questions on the Home Learning Portal?
I just want to say that this is, again, a new way of doing business. Quite a bit of work has gone into this by many, many folks. And I want to just congratulate and shout out to the teachers because, again, this is, they've had the open mind to say, what do we need to do to make this easier for us, make it easier for our families? So kudos to them for building their capacity with all of this technology. And I'm continuing to learn each day as we, you know, get better at this. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
So in addition to the Home Learn and Portal icon that's up here, we still have this extended Home Learning tab here. Now, this is everything, and I've considered renaming this, but right now it's staying the same. This is everything that is around the COVID-19 crisis. And I'm just moving my toolbar out of the way here. So the first link you'll see is the COVID-19 information. And this, this is where parents can find information related to COVID-19. There's a Department of Education links there. In addition, there's the Home Learning page. These are extended home learning resources that are really available across the whole district. These are things in addition to the Home Learning Portal that's up here. These are links that are available to all students across the district. To, some of these are very general, national geographic, just some more activities for students to take advantage of and utilize while at home. So here are some more videos here, a video link. And then there's a few more I just want, I know, I don't want to keep everyone going too long here. Library links and resources, social, emotional supports and boredom busters. There's some good links in there.
Can you show that one, Mr. Oliver? Because that, I know our clinical staff has put a lot of work into that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, perfect, doctor. And I, my apologies here.
No, 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 that's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. So here, there's, I looked at this a couple of days ago. And there's a lot of, like Dr. Bailey said, a lot of great resources here, specifically around the crisis that we're experiencing as a society. Managing stress and anxiety, there's links here from the CDC, you know, ways to talk to your children about this if your students are having a difficult time. Social, emotional learning, preventing, you know, preventing loneliness. This has come up several times, as I'm sure we've all seen in the media, which it's really important to just continue to reach out to your friends, to your colleagues. If you're a student, especially your friends, your teachers, because it's so important to keep in touch on a regular, daily basis. We all need some mindfulness, and there's a lot of great ones here. I think maybe later on tonight, after the meeting, I might have to come in to one of these and do some mindfulness classes. In addition to, and here are the boredom busters and some of the other links that are available here.
That looks amazing.
This is really great, very, just so well put together.
I really got to say, I agree, you know, and not just because I'm an employee of the school district, but we, our staff has really stepped up to the plate. of the school district, but we, our staff has really stepped up to the plate to really deliver what's in the best interest of students here. There's a lot of time and effort has gone into this. And then we have our hotline numbers there. So I urge parents to really take advantage of the, the information and the data that is available on these sites. Dr. Bailey, do you have anything else to add?
I just want to say that the reason why I was spending a little bit more time is because this is our way of doing business right now, is this remote learning. But children are very resilient, and they follow our leads as adults. And one thing that has really inspired me, and I've been encouraged, is seeing all of their smiling faces when they're on Facebook and responding to our Facebook challenges. So, you know, if parents are out there listening, I just want to say, keep up the wonderful work that you're doing, and each new day is a new day. But Mr. Oliver, thank you so much.
I do still have the YouTube channel, if you want to see that.
And I know there was one more link for the virtual field trips, which lists all of those places, I believe, that children can visit.
That is correct, as soon as it loads here.
So really giving children and families the resources to support them during this remote learning time at home. And it's not about being in front of a computer all hours of the day. Remote learning looks very different, outside activities, inside activities, hands-on, some online things, some hands-on written components, et cetera.
So it's not, for whatever reason, the virtual field trips isn't loading, that's one of the, and my internet's actually, my video's freezing. Can everyone still hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I'm going to try it one more time, and then I'm going to move on.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't want to load for some reason.
Okay.
I do also have the select board meeting in my other, in my ear here, that's on my other screen, so that could be adding to it. So we're going to take a quick look. This was something that we've been talking about for a while, but with the extended school closures taking place, Dr. Bailey really asked if we could expedite the creation of our YouTube channel, which we did. I believe it was towards the end of our first week close that I was able to create and publish our Acushion at Schools media channel on YouTube. So anyone that goes to youtube.com, if they search for Acushion at Schools Media, they will find this channel here. As you can see, we already have 111 subscribers. And anytime that a new video is posted, and I urge people that if they have the opportunity to subscribe, because anytime a new video is posted, or like tonight, we're streaming our, our school committee meeting live on YouTube Live, we got a notification that YouTube is, the Acushion at Schools media is now live with a school committee meeting. And anyone that's subscribed will get that information. And really, going to give shout outs to all the teachers that took the time, and I got to say courage to some extent, because some of these, some of these videos, you look at Mrs. Ashley here, props to, and kudos to Mrs. Ashley for reading, read alouds, Mr. Alves, just, those are just two, but really to all our teachers for putting, and our staff for putting videos out there to YouTube. So this is, this has just been a great opportunity for students to, and parents to see, you know, our teachers and our staff in action. Any questions on our YouTube channel? All right. Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver, much appreciated. So I thought it was important to spend some time tonight on an update with remote learning and to show you that our staff is continuing to work hard, to work differently. But people have had an open mind to do things differently because we've had to. And I want to thank all of the families for their patience and support, because we will continue to get better at this as we go along. Continuously working with the staff moving forward, should school be, closure be extended, we will be working together as a staff to figure out what is the best next step in terms of, you know, do we look at power standards, and what are the most important things that children should be exposed to from now until the next closure date. But anyway, it's been a true team effort, and I want to just thank everyone again. That's a lot of hard work that has gone into that, and it's been a true team effort. So I'm really proud of the work that the staff here has done. So I just, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. No?
Looks great.
Great job.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, business manager's report, Mrs. Flynn.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. You have all of the report in your agenda, so I'll just briefly go over some of the highlights of it. The first report is our school committee budget update, and it's very similar to what you've seen in the past, but I did add on to it to try to project out some of our costs, as I put in, that we may or may not be experiencing due to school closure. So I tried to add a little bit more detail so that you could get an idea of, you know, where we're hopefully going to end come June 30th with the budget. So the changes, there's still the same salary surpluses, but I did offset those with some other costs, additional salary costs. You can see, if you're looking at the report, the one-page Excel report, it goes line, it goes line by line. And toward the bottom, I did input the food service payroll and the preschool payroll. Both of those payrolls come from revolving funds. And since we're not serving lunch and selling lunch, we won't be getting the revenue, so we may have to charge those salaries to the local budget. So I wanted to make sure to reserve funds for that. So you can see, that's projected out from school closure till the end of the school year, if we have to charge those salaries to the local budget and not the two revolving funds. Now, speaking of preschool, again, we're not taking, we may, we've already asked for our fourth payment, so mostly everyone has paid in full with their tuition. However, there will, there should be a discussion depending on if we do go back to school, whether or not there would be some sort of credit back to the families that paid for a full year. And we have to look at that in terms of what, what home learning that the students are doing versus, you know, how much they've paid for the year. So that's something I just wanted to give a little bit of a preview to. We also, I added the anticipated special education contract services line. We knew that we probably were going to have a surplus in that. Mrs. Betancourt has been able to have some of those services done in-house, but I put this in here because that way we know just what we're looking at. And actually, we did get another invoice today, so instead of that 106,000, it's about 95,000 that we're anticipating. Now, I want to say that it'd probably be important to, you know, keep those funds in mind for use in perhaps prepaying special ed tuitions for next year. We're going to have to have some discussions about the FY21 budget, and, you know, we may have to make some reductions. So this is a way that we can help out with that. So just keep that in mind also. The tuition reimbursement remains the same. I also included a surplus in professional development. These are funds that we had budgeted for our teachers and staff to attend conferences. Some of those conferences obviously have already been canceled. Some of them are being held online, but anticipating that these funds won't be used, you see that in there. I did update the high school tuition, looking at a deficit of approximately 13,000. I will know for certain, once I get the third and final tuition bill from Fairhaven High School. Also, out of district tuition, that has changed. We're looking at a deficit even with, and this is a small change, this is a change from last time, we hadn't recommended using the special ed stabilization fund. However, since we last spoke on this in the budget, we've had three additional out-of-district placements. That's impacting us this, not only this year for tuition and transportation, but also in next year's budget. So we'll have to add those into next year's budget. So right now, the deficit using 50,000 of the stabilization fund is 16,723, and that would be using 50,000. So right now, there's the actual deficit of 60, over 60,000, okay. Transportation, we have pretty much breaking even with transportation, even with these additional students. We were able to use some Title I's funds for foster student transportation, the small amount that we did have. We do not have any monitors required for special education students, so that's going to help out. And also, we cut back on what we'll need for the late bus, because clearly the late buses aren't running. And finally, I did add in the facilities anticipated deficit for electricity. That'll be offset by oil. The price of oil has gone down considerably, and we had a mild winter, so we do have some savings there. We do have some, as usual, the maintenance and custodial services deficits. Those always are always underbudgeted, you know, by, by, it's just, it just is the way it's been when we have to cut the budgets, we cut the supply lines. So those, we know we always have underbudgeted. In my report, I did add in some detail as to, you know, some of the, the costs that we've had in facilities this year that we may not have anticipated from the budget. So you can see, we had some significant repairs to our HVAC system. We had advanced air come out and take a look at all of our rooftop units with the fans and belts. And so that had some significant repairs, in addition to all of the heating over the winter time, especially when we didn't have an in-house person for a couple of months. We needed to outsource that and have the technicians come in and do some work that otherwise we would have done in-house, had we had someone. So you can see, we also replaced the tile, some tile at the elementary school. We've had some fire alarm system repairs, the gymnasium door that we had to replace. Unexpected over the summer was spraying for the mosquitoes when we had the triple E outbreak, so we made sure that we had been spraying considerably. So that was, you know, an anticipating expense, and also some repairs along our fence property line that we've, that we've made due to all of, some trees coming down due to high winds we've had. And we also purchased some new snow blowers, unfortunately, or fortunately, we didn't have to use them this year, but they're ready to go for next year. So that's a quick update on the budget. Next item, and I do want to mention, I did mention that we will have to take a closer look at our FY21 budget. So that's something that we will be scheduling would be a budget subcommittee meeting to take a look at that. Unfortunately, we've had some increased costs due to those additional out-of-district placements that I spoke of. So that's something that we will have to consider, and we also have to consider, you know, looking at our budget in terms of, of what the town can bear in light of this, in light of the COVID-19 crisis. So I know a lot of school departments and towns are grappling with that now, so that's something we'll need to be discussing very soon. In terms of school lunch, you have the school lunch update through the month of February. Operations in school lunch stopped as of March 13th, and as I mentioned, we'll probably have to switch some of the payroll expenses over to the local budget. Facilities update, I do have a few updates. As Dr. Bailey mentioned, Mr. Steve Willett began work as our director of facilities on March 23rd. He's already gotten a running start. He's done, I detailed some of the work that he's already been doing inside and outside the building. So, you know, we are very fortunate to have him and have someone back on a daily basis, taking care of our, our big buildings. So you can see some of the things, you know, again, we have a lot of work on all four boilers, it's almost daily. And then we've had some roof leaks due to all the rain, so he's been on top of that, and doing some other preventative maintenance and some, some other projects around some needed projects. So what we'll do is, once we get back to a face-to-face meeting, we'll have Mr. Willett come in and introduce. Big toy. So last update with big toy is we were waiting for the top rail for the cargo net. That's been received. Unfortunately, the installer isn't doing any work until the nonessential business restriction is lifted. So he did, I was in contact with him, and he said he will be out as soon as he can. So that will complete our major big toy renovation. So that's good. The roof, we had a site visit with the architects on March 23rd, and so they're working on, together with the project manager, they're working on submission for the schematic design phase to get us on the June MSBA board meeting, and hopefully get final approval for the project. We did have some more roof leaks, so Mr. Willett has been dealing with those, and trying to fashion a cover for some roof vents that are always tricky for us. So we're just moving right along with that. One final thing that I wanted to discuss was contracted services continuing payment during school closure. And again, this is something that a lot of schools, all schools are talking about. It's been a major topic of all my business manager Zoom conferences, and it's whether or not, how, what do we continue to pay while school is closed? Well, the Department of Ed made it somewhat easier for us, because they've come out, and you have these documents in your, in your agenda, and they've come out and advised school departments to continue payments of certain services, such as out of just tuitions to collaboratives, other mass schools. So for us, it would be our high schools, private schools, and to continue with those tuition payments during the closure. We've also advised that service payments for contracted special education-related service providers be continued, and, you know, review those scope of services, because some of these things are still happening remotely. And basically, the idea is to ensure that the vendor contracts reflect the necessary requirements to get these services up and running when we do reopen schools. More, most considerably is our, our school bus transportation. That's been a hot topic for all, all schools lately, is what do we do about the school transportation? So the Department of Ed has advised, in their advisory, that they expect school districts to continue payments for outsourced operational services that are needed to ensure continuity of essential services when schools reopen. Such payments may be conditioned on negotiated changes to contracts in order to address unanticipated service needs during the state of emergency. These services include, but are not limited to, transportation, custodial, and food services. So the idea is they want to ensure continuity of services if and when, you know, for when we reopen school. So that's something, like I said, that we're all sort of struggling with, and many districts have formed groups with other districts who use their bus companies, for example, to, to try to get game plans, so that everyone who uses the Emerald Bus, for example, is getting the same information and is working together to see what is fair to pay. So I'm in the middle of doing that now. We have, we've had a couple of Zoom calls already. We have another one tomorrow. So that's, you know, where we're at with that. You did have, I did include some letters that we received from Emerald Bus Company in your packet, that they sent, and it's some of it is reiterating that the Department of Ed saying that please continue paying us. So really, what we're doing now is we're deciding, trying to decide what is, what is fair for both sides to continue payment for services. We recognize that the bus companies may not have certain costs, especially if they've laid off their employees, that's a major cost. So that needs to be considered. They're not using gas, that also needs to be considered. They're not facing those expenses. But they do need to keep their buses ready, and their drivers trained, their consistent workforce, the buses maintained and ready to go. If we say, okay, come May 5th, we need the buses to start rolling again. So that's, that's the discussion there. So I don't know, Dr. Bailey, if you have anything to add on that?
I do. I just want to let people know that, the committee know that we consulted with council based on the transportation contract that we did include in your packet. And according to the contract and state law, we do have the ability to stop payment. It's clearly stated on number 11 in the contract in terms of Acts of God, if something should happen, such as a pandemic, we do have the ability. But that being said, what Mrs. Flynn just outlined, you know, we should discuss to the greatest extent practical and possible as part of the CARES Act, how we can negotiate a price, or, you know, something reasonable to the transportation companies, or any other contract for that matter, where we are not receiving services. But I just wanted the committee to know that, you know, we do have the ability to stop payment based on our written contract, but through the CARES Act, you know, what is the greatest extent practical mean? And that's, I think, a deeper discussion that we probably need to have, maybe in a budget subcommittee meeting that I'll be planning for next week.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
One question I have is, can you look into the CARES Act as far as if we're exempt from that, because we're a school department? I know some, like, healthcare organizations are exempt from that act because they're a healthcare organization. So for an example, if it says you have to give your employees two weeks off, well, if you're a doctor in the ED, you don't, you don't have that benefit, because it's a healthcare organization. So I just wonder, just if we're looking at all the facts, I just think it's important to see if, if schools would fall under that category.
One of the things that the CARES Act does say, there's a provision that, that states municipalities, which a school is, will, quote, "the greatest extent practicable," continue to pay their employees and contractors. So while it doesn't say that schools are exempt in that language right there, to me, it does, it doesn't say that we don't have to follow it either. So we can certainly look into that, but I haven't heard that we are exempt.
And if I could just add to that, Mrs. Flynn, one of the other things, because the CARES Act is recommending that, we should Because the CARES Act is recommending that, we should take a serious look at that. Because if we, as a district, are entitled to federal money, they may withhold the money from us if we do decide not to. Pay. But again, I think it can be all negotiated. I think there's two ways to look at it. And getting to that common ground would be important. Mrs. Flynn, do you want to talk about our next steps in terms of working with our neighboring districts? And getting some information together from the bus company?
So one of our districts, one of the common districts that uses Amoral Bus Company had already. They must, they had a school committee meeting earlier than we did and they already. Had a letter drafted from their council to send to Amoral Bus Company that they've shared with the, the other four of us, there's five districts. It's Fall River, Westport, Swansea, Old Rochester and Bristol County Agricultural High School. And then of course, we, us. So they've shared out that letter and several of the districts were already planning to send it out last week. We had our call on Wednesday. And the, the rest of us were waiting to plan to send it out, but we wanted to discuss it first at a school committee meeting. So that would be the next step. And basically, the letter is included in your packet that was drafted by the other school district. And that was also reviewed by our council. And there's no objection to sending it out legally from, from council. But basically, what it does is it requests certain information from Amoral Bus Company to help us make a decision on what's, what's fair. What sort of a discount should we take to that daily per bus per day rate to that contract rate? So that's what the draft letter on Amoral Bus asks for some certain things. Now, whether or not they will comply and send in that information, we don't know. But it's really a good faith effort on our part to try to understand what their burdens are during this time and try to. Make sure, you know, they're our partner in bringing our students in safely to school. So to make sure that they're ready, you know, like I said, come May, May fourth, May fifth, if we are back in school or whenever that date may be. That they're ready. We don't want, you know, it takes a while to train and hire drivers. And so, you know, the fear is that some of the drivers may find other work or may not come back. Our drivers are pretty experienced here in a cushionet. A lot of them are residents, some of them are parents. So some, it's, it's those kinds of considerations that school districts are taking under, you know, and other costs that. The bus companies may or may not face. So I think the goal is to work together to come up with something fair for both parties in the end. So the next step would be to send that letter out and, and hope that we got some needed information. We have another call tomorrow, so we're going to report back to each other where we're at, if we've come up with anything. And all school districts across the Commonwealth are, I'm seeing this on my listserv, they're coming up with negotiated rate discounts for their bus companies. And it really depends, you know, on your bus company. If the bus company has laid off the driver, certainly that's the biggest expense, or if they're keeping the drivers on the payroll. So the, the percent discount could run the gamut. So.
Kristen. I just have a question because we have a couple of parents that are bus drivers. Do we know if they have furloughed their drivers, Amoral?
I don't know specifically for a cushionet, but I know in another town, they did. They did lay off their drivers for another, another contract. I don't know specifically. I haven't spoken to the drivers here in a cushionet. I don't know.
Thank you.
Kristen, are there any other third-party contracts that we can review in this manner?
Transportation is the biggest one. The other ones that we have would be our contracted services for special education, the OTPT. And most, the bulk of those are through our collaboratives, Reads and Smech. And in speaking with Ms. Benton Court, some of those services are continuing. And in speaking with the, the collaboratives, they are, they are continuing some of those services. Anything else is, is, we don't really have any contracts with anyone else per se. Other than transportation and, and some related services, but it's very minimal.
I mean, are we taking a look at the, Kristen, have you taken a look at the rest of them? And seen where there's possibilities of maybe doing something with them?
Yes, that's what I discussed in the budget update. There's, there's a list of the special education contract services.
Right.
And that, that we hope to use to prepay if we need to. But, you know, that'll help us with the, we'll need to have a budget subcommittee meeting for that.
So we will be discussing it all. All the, all the third parties, Craig, will be discussed at the subcommittee.
Okay.
And I'll just mention, we can talk about this too, um, meeting as Kristen is meeting with the state. I have plenty of conference calls and one of the things that they're talking about, they're looking into ways of. Any savings that we have this year, using that money towards next year's budget in addition to prepaying tuitions. We are in a crisis situation, so they're looking for ways that we can legally. Get around that. So I do know that people at the state level are talking about that. So if I hear anything on that, certainly let everyone know.
Okay. All right. So that's, anybody have any questions for Mrs. Flynn? Before we move on? Okay.
Can I just add one thing? If we could get three people in to sign warrants, we have a bunch that are ready to go. If you could just email me to let me know when you possibly could come in, so we could make sure that someone is there to open the door. We don't always have someone in the business office to hear the doorbell. I don't hear it in my office, so. But if I know you're coming, I can certainly look out for you. So we'll need some, some members to come in and sign some documents. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So under school committee member reports, we do have the superintendent's contract. We are going to go into executive session. This is that time of year where we started to discuss her contract and the possibility for an extension. And we've been having some discussions around that. So we are going to go into executive session for that and then we will come back out. Whether we vote for it or, or not for it, we have, we'll come back out into public session either way. So communication and information, there's some communication to families, Dessie on the desktop. Dr. Bailey, do you need to go over any of those specifically or those just are our items?
Everything is listed on the website. We've been just keeping a compiled list of the letters and updates on the website.
Great. So I will read the executive session, but just so everyone for the public will know what we're going to do. We're gonna break for this regular session. We are actually going to go into a Zoom executive session meeting. And then we will break from that meeting and then we will come back to open session. So for executive session, we are going to, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation? If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations, negotiations with non-using personnel. So can I have a motion to go into executive session for those reasons?
Still moved.
Have a second? Okay. All right. So we are going to, it is six fifty-two and we will adjourn and we will come back into open session. Tea?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. So we, so thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is new to us. So I think we accomplished a lot. So thank you. All right. So we have three things that we are going to make a motion on while we are here, make a vote on. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the custodial contract. As presented to us throughout executive session, like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. So that is all set. I would like to also make a motion to approve. To compensate Dr. Bailey for her unused vacation time based on our discussions and the situation she's been with this year. Can I have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And lastly, we did discuss, Dr. Bailey's, we did discuss a contract extension for Dr. Bailey. That would take her as being our superintendent until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. So we were very excited to discuss that and we had some great conversation. So I would like to make a motion to approve Dr. Bailey's extension of her contract till June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Pending no legal issues after they review it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And with, if anyone doesn't have anything else, then we will make a motion to adjourn regular session.
Thank you.
All right. A motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Before we go, thank you, Paula, for everything. We're very excited to have you.
Do we have a second? Yes, we have a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right. So thank you, Paula. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.